The Detroit Lakes City Council has called an order. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular agenda as it's presented. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that needs to make any corrections to the regular agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for its approval.
I so move.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the regular agenda. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held September 12th, 2023, are before the council. Again, is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes or corrections to the minutes as they're printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 12th, 2023. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Elizabeth Waifel found her way over here.
Yes.
Elizabeth with Flairity and Hood, and she's going to provide the council with the annual Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Report. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Very excited to be here.
Do you turn your mic on?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, no worries. Usually, I go over to perm and they're like, "You're so loud, you don't even need a mic." But thank you, Mayor and council members. It's exciting to be here. I think, as you all know, Detroit Lakes is always one of my favorite places to stop. I think all of you know this, but for the audience, this Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is an organization of more than 100 cities across the state that works on important issues like property tax relief, environment and energy, economic development, transportation, annexation and land use, labor and employment. Detroit Lakes has long been a member of this group, and it's not just a member, it's been a longtime, very active member. Kelsey Clem, for example, sits on the board and co-chairs one of the committees that I staff, the annexation of land use. So Detroit Lakes has always been an important part of what we do. Boy, it was a legislative session, a lot of goals. And I'm just going to say upfront, there was a lot that happened this legislative session. If I tried to tell you everything, we'd be here for a couple hours and you'd be all really bored. So we're only going to hit some highlights, so I'd encourage you to look at the report. But here's just a list of some of the goals we had. You know, wanting to update the LGA formula, making sure we had a bonding built on, lead line money, funding for city streets of all sorts, corridors of commerce funding and reform, reform is very important there, childcare and economic development, as well as workforce housing. And this is kind of what it looked like, I think my hand might be one of those in there. It was a crazy, feisty session, and we had a lot of priorities going in there. The DFL had a lot of priorities, as well as did other interest groups. And at the end of the day, there was a little pushing, a little shoving, a lot of legislative action, but there were some pretty good outcomes for cities, although there's some things we'll be back next year to work on and try and fix. One of the biggest things that had an impact this year was the budget surplus. The biggest thing I want to point out there is the blue versus the orange. The blue is basically what's considered ongoing money, so there were a lot of requests for changes, changes like increases to LGA permanently. Challenge was is that only that blue portion is what was considered to be ongoing and usable for ongoing priorities. Some of the other challenges we faced this session, volume and speed of legislation. We saw more bills introduced this past legislative session than ever. We also had a DFL majority dominated by metro area members. I mean, I think, as you recall, Representative Mark Court used to be a representative around here. We lost a lot of the DFL members in the rural areas, so the majority was really dominated by metro folks. And that became a challenge at times because there was no backstop on some potentially harmful proposals, although we did get some help from senators like Senator Kupack, Senator Housechild, some of the rural legislators. Local government aid, a couple things we wanted to do. Wanted to increase the money going into it. One of the things, and I know this is important to Detroit Lakes, was to update the LGA formula to make sure that we are getting maximum impact for greater Minnesota cities and that as your cities change, that it also changes with it. The other thing we tried to do is add inflation and population growth. Governor came out with a proposal. He proposed $30 million, which he thought was okay, and included formula updates. Not surprisingly, we said that was not enough. We were a little disappointed, wrestled with him a little bit, and he came up to $40 million in the supplemental budget. Still not where we wanted, but he was not the only person with the say. We had hearings in both the House and the Senate. We had mayors testifying on these to push forward on our bill. And we saw different proposals. I would say the House really was what was closest to our goal, and they wanted to include both $100 million, but also that inflationary increase. And that inflationary increase is going to be something that is just really important. You know, your expenses as a city goes up every year, and LGA should keep up with that as well. The outcome, not surprisingly, was somewhere in between. It was an $80 million increase. We did not get the inflationary adjustment. Again, the fact that there's only so much ongoing money made that more challenging, but we were pleased to see that we at least got the number pushed up. This is what it looks like for Detroit Lakes for a bump of more than $100,000 to your budget. Obviously, we would have preferred our other proposal, but we'll continue to work on things like increasing the amount and the inflationary adjustment. Bonding, this is another thing. As you probably know, they didn't get a bonding built on in '21 or '22. Part of the challenge is you need 60% majority in each chamber. And so right out of the bat, the House did come forward with a bill that had 21 GOP members voting for it, but it failed in the Senate. And the Senate GOP strategy was to try and extract some other things, including nursing homemade, and it was just a lot of negotiations going on. Got to be the end of session, the DFL said, "Hey, if you're not going to agree with us, we're going to pass an all cash bonding bill." We were concerned about that. By all cash, that means they don't have to put bonds out, so they don't need to have a super majority. And what that would have meant is that we would have seen a lot less money for greater Minnesota. At least on programs alone, it would have been $238 million less, and that doesn't include a lot of the individual projects for greater Minnesota that probably wouldn't have happened. We did a lot to try and push forward. We had this letter right here that honestly, I can't remember the last time I've seen a letter make that much splash that we've done at the legislature, but it was really encouraging the Senate GOP to stand up and pass that bill so we could move forward. And at the end of the day, a couple days, a couple hours practically before session ended, we did get a bill that DFL agreed to nursing homemade, which quite frankly is really important for greater Minnesota. And we ended up with the largest bonding bill, our infrastructure bill we've seen, was made of cash and made of bonds. And lots of money for important priorities like the PFA, BPI, some money on our housing and childcare programs. Now, it wasn't quite as high on those as we would have liked, but those are new programs, and sometimes we just need to start the funding, and we will be pushing for more on those later. Why did it come together? Quite frankly, this is where our folks like you guys come in, is that the public pressure from our organization and from our local city officials really did make a difference. I think that combined with the credible threat of a cash bill meant that we had legislators willing to compromise and we got a bonding built on. Environment. Now, this is the area I work on, and lots of activity, some really good stuff. We have been working over the last couple years to try and get money to replace lead lines throughout the state. And as you may know, there's no safe amount of lead in drinking water. And all cities are required by the federal government to map your lead lines by October 2024. We pushed for $100 million, we got $240 million. Good down payment does a couple things. It will help all cities across the state replace their lead lines. It will help you inventory and do the mapping. And it will also cover the homeowner's side, because for a lot of cities, that's actually where more of the lead line is. Also, other historic investments in water infrastructure programs, both to the PFA, to local greater Minnesota projects, as well as money to the MPCA. One of the issues, I know it's kind of strange, you hear the CGMC pushing for MPCA money, but they've been asking for a fee increase, but said if we get money from the general fund, we won't increase our fees. So there was money put there as well, unfortunately not ongoing, so it's an issue we'll have to continue dealing with. And that's me. I also spent a lot of time playing defense, and this was trying to protect greater Minnesota on a number of proposals. We saw this on the lead lines and on other things having to do with the Public Facilities Authority. There are some legislators who don't quite grasp why it's important that some of that money goes out to greater Minnesota, so we spent a lot of time blocking attempts that would change funding formulas to benefit the metro area. And so we were able to stop those. We also worked on some proposals that would have made it a lot harder to get air permits in greater Minnesota in a way that could have really hampered growth and economic development. We were able to narrow the scope of that to pretty much the metro area and to first-class cities. You know, and I'll be honest, one of the challenges we ran into here is that there just wasn't a lot of thought. I mean, the proposals may have had some good ideas in the background, but they didn't give a lot of thought to how they would be impacting greater Minnesota. And so that's really where we came in. And again, this was really a joint effort with a lot of our members to try and slow or stop these things. And I'll be honest, you are going to be seeing these things again. I'm fully expecting it in the next legislative session. Now, that's a lot, like I said, there's even more. There was just a lot going on this legislative session. But looking ahead to next year, it is a traditional year for a bonding bill. We are really hoping, again, that we get a bonding bill. They're out doing tours right now. Yes, we had record investment this past spring, but the thing to keep in mind is that that investment should have happened in 2022. We need to get back on track. We also expect a lot of debate about constitutional amendments. We already know one that will be on the ballot, and that's about the dedication of the lottery funds to the Environmental Trust Fund. You may not have been tracking that, but it's already passed. There's going to be a lot of discussion about a lot of different amendments, and I think that could be creating some tussling within the majority caucuses. Potentially surplus spending and also fix-it items. I mean, you probably know, we're already starting to see some stuff that passed through the legislative session really quickly that's going to need fixes. And so we do expect policy items to be on the agenda. And the fund will start February 12th. Also, again, it's an election year, which always has an impact. There's a number of federal races that will be going on, obviously President, US House, Amy Klobuchar's seat, and the Minnesota House will be at reelection. Governor's office, Senate are not on the ballot, so that always has a little bit of an impact on their approaches. Upcoming events. Our fall conference is coming up in about a month, and it's going to be in Wilmer, and Paul Markort is actually one of our featured speakers. If you've been missing him, you could go join us all, see him speak as well. Legislative Action Day, obviously one of our biggest events of, I would say it actually probably is numbers-wise, our biggest event of the year. That'll be March 20th. And then our summer conference will be over in Wake Park in St. Joseph's. That was a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions?
Elizabeth, one question I have is, looking at the fix-it that was there, is that SRO going to be discussed at all coming up?
You know, I suspect it will. I don't think we're going to see a special session on it. I mean, I'll be honest, that's just me. I don't know anything more than anybody else. I think there will be ongoing discussions. I think there is a little bit of a fear that if they did it now, they may not get it right. But I do think it'll be discussed. I think that you may see the Senate and the House having to come up with some different ideas. I can't promise a fix. It's been something we've been watching, the League is watching, a lot of other groups are watching to see what happens, but I do think it'll be discussed.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Elizabeth? Well, we sure appreciate all the good work the Coalition does for Detroit Lakes, and thank you for coming this evening, and next year we'll be in our new remodeled building, hopefully.
Yay! Well, thank you again. I appreciate all the work that all of you folks do. It really does help us get our jobs done, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
And Mayor, as Elizabeth said, we're going to have our meeting here November down in Wilmer, and we're having everybody, the council invited to attend, as they like to put out of that. It's very informational, a lot of good information, and they really put on a good show, and with Markort being there, it's going to be extra special.
Very good. Okay, without objection, I'd like to jump into the community development agenda. Matt, will you introduce by the N5E, please?
We'll do it. We're going to start with 5E. Considerations will resolution approving a variance to allow an accessory structure to be more than 14 feet tall at 1055 North Shore Drive. Kelsey, I'm going to take a crack at this and then fill in the holes. This was originally denied by staff recommendation, went to the planning commission, and they voted unanimously to approve it. We had a good discussion last night at CDC. We came to the approval that we would deny this. The question at hand is, the Shanks are looking for a garage taller than 14 foot to the midpoint of the roof. And I guess that was the big discussion last night. Kelsey, anything I missed there, or anything to add?
Mayor and council, Alderman Bokey did a pretty good job there covering it. So basically, the variance is a variance request from our height requirement. So for an accessory structure, the ordinance has a max height of 14 feet, which is measured to the midpoint of the roof. This proposal, I know the one resolution meant it's 18 feet. I think it's actually probably just under 16 feet is where the actual variance is. In the packet, again, is a resolution to approve the variance based upon the planning commission's recommendation, and then the findings that are listed in that resolution were, the findings that were listed by the applicant in the application. Also handed out another resolution as another option that you can consider that would deny the variance based upon the original staff report and some findings in that regard. I know last night, there was some discussion about practical difficulties and when a variance could be issued, and certainly Charlie Ramstead is here. If you have that question, there were some questions amongst the council members. With that, I got a lot of, the applicant is here, I have a lot of different supporting documentation that the council wants to see.
Thank you. At this point, like I mentioned, there was a motion to deny this last night at CDC, and I so moved.
Is there a motion's been made seconded to deny the variance? I know Mr. and Mrs. Schenk are here. Do you wish to speak to the council at all?
Yes, please.
Just going to hand these out to people.
Hi, I'm Kelly, and that's my husband Scott. Thanks for giving us a little bit of time to speak.
You're welcome.
So like you said, we attended two very different meetings. The first meeting, we got, everybody agreed, yep, we got a unanimous approval. And then last night, it was a denial, so we're not sure where to go from here, but we just wanted to give you a little bit of background in case you haven't had a chance to look at the packet. We currently have a two-and-a-half car garage with a very low roof and ceiling. There's a picture in your packet showing, yeah, and there it is right there, too. Yeah. The foundation is crumbling and the building needs to be replaced. We have an asphalt driveway and parking area that takes quite a bit of our lot. So what our plan was, was to remove all of the driveway and replace it with a shorter one that would actually give back, how much green space?
249 square feet green space given back.
Right. The reason for the height variance request is because we have a seven-and-a-half-foot tall conversion van that we use to drive back and forth from Texas. We're here in the summer and fall full-time. Scott has an office up at the mall, so he's able to work there. And we go back to Texas usually early November, and that van is really important to us. We carry our pets in there and all of our personal belongings, so it really would be great if we could have a place to park it when we're here. We would need an eight-foot garage door for that. We currently have seven foot, so obviously the van can't fit in there. I even have trouble with my, I have a smaller SUV, and when I pop the hatch open, it hits the top of the garage door when I'm trying to unload my groceries, so I'm not sure if that's a common problem with people, you know, with the seven-foot garage doors, but if we could have a bigger one, that would really help us out. The storage above is also really important to us. We have like a 1,300 square foot 1940 cabin that we love, and we're just trying to conserve it and keep it the way it is. And if we could have some storage that you can walk around, you know, not bang your head on the top of the garage, where I could, I'm an artist, I'd love to have a place to paint, do my projects, exercise. We actually keep our kitchen stuff and a lot of our clothing in our current garage, so it's a situation where we're going out there every day to get our stuff. So we'd love it if we could have a temperature-controlled, year-round space that's clean and nice to keep all of our belongings, and that's what the second story would do for us. Any questions?
On your bonus room, that's a, what's that going to consist of? It's going to be heated and air-conditioned, is that correct?
It would be temperature-controlled, yes.
And what will be part of that? Will you have kitchenette?
No, just a bathroom. We have wave plans for a toilet and a sink, so that we can make good use of the space.
In the space of your garage, you said last night, you're going to go to 1,922 square feet.
I think that includes upper and lower, right?
Upper and lower, you mentioned last night.
Lower is just, what, how much?
The 200.
Yeah, well, so we're going basically from a two-and-a-half car garage to a three-car garage, but we're giving back green space, so it's not changing the footprint that much. We're changing the footprint for better.
In the current house you have, your house is only 1,300 square feet.
That is correct.
So you've really increased the size of your garage in this bonus room, and actually the practical difficulty that you have is that you've got this conversion van, that's why you want to go from 14 feet up to 16 or 18 feet. I know that's really been determined where that was going to be set, so that goes up quite a bit.
That's correct, yes.
Let's see. Because see, that was one of the concerns of mine, is that if we go ahead and allow this for you, we could start having everybody in Detroit Lakes, when they take their current garages and make them into bonus rooms, and you know, right now, everything, I hear so much of people around the lake right now saying, like, everything seems to be so close together, and we virtually don't have much space to even hardly walk between houses anymore, and that is a little bit of a concern of mine. When we were going from a 1,300 square foot house, you admitted that it was too small when you bought it, and so now, instead of adding on the house, you want to put it in this bonus room. And the only practical difficulty was this conversion van you have, that you can't, you have a hard time getting.
Well, we bought the home in 2018, and it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house, pretty close to the lake. I think it's about 15 feet from the water. So we just really want to preserve it. We loved it because of the view, the proximity to the lake, it's got original wood floors, it's got original doors, it's a really cute place. So we don't want to tear it down, and you know, we don't want to mess with it too much. So this garage was a great idea, just to keep our cabin the way it is. Our neighbors both submitted recommendations for the garage. So the people that are living around us really like the idea. They want to see improvements in North Shore Drive. They thought it was a great design. Skye is our neighbor, Fingelson, she thought it was a great design and it would really help, just improve the harmony in the design of the neighborhood.
I got a question. What am I missing here? It went, the first time it went through and no one had any objections?
Correct. Well, yeah.
So what am I missing?
The staff recommendation was to deny. It was proposed and brought to the planning commission, they was unanimous, yes. Came to us last night, what's that?
Even though the staff?
Correct.
Their recommendation was to deny the planning commission approved.
Correct. Yep. And I guess the thought on this errand last night at least, to me boils down to a policy question. If we're going to hand out variances because we're not sticking to the 14 feet, then we're going to see these, could potentially see them come in hand over fist. What I would like to see is denial on this, not because I'm against the project, because I think we need to look at that policy. And you know, Mr. and Mrs. Schenk, you said you'd love to get concrete in this fall. If we could deny it now and look and add this back to the planning commission to see if that 14 feet is actually where it needs to stay. Look at other communities, is it 14 feet, is it 16 feet? And really kind of dive into that errand to see if the 14 feet is still relevant or not. So that's why I would like to deny this and add it back to the planning commission, to have them relook at that 14-foot number, to see if that's still relevant or makes sense. And then if it does get adjusted, then the Shanks could reapply if that new number does change depending on the recommendations.
But my thing here is, there's no neighbors here complaining about the spence, and they're trying to make this a more pleasantly looking property. And I'd be frustrated by what these people, it goes through one commission and it's unanimously approved, and then all of a sudden we're delaying them again. I don't, I guess I'd go for these people.
Matt, can I bring up something? Sean Carlson was actually at the meeting. He heard every single thing. He is 100% to do this. He actually, I talked to him this afternoon. If he was here, he was going to push for it. He was going to, he said, "I would have directed the whole thing for you," but he's in Arizona.
Yep, I spoke to him this morning as well. Yep.
Matt, I don't think the question is, should it be 14 feet, or 16 feet, or 18 feet? The question is, whatever we set it at, there's always going to be someone requesting a variance beyond that limitation. So the question is, is it a valid variance, no matter what, if it's 14 feet or whatever? It comes down to, is it a valid variant? And does it fit the definition by our city code of what a variance should provide?
The next comment we're talking about, take the van out of, if you own a brand-new pickup, and I do, I have a brand-new pickup down at the GMC, and it's two inches higher this year, I don't know if any of you has, I know most of you guys have pickups, but if you try to drive a brand-new pickup truck into one of these garages now, especially if there's ice or snow just a little bit, you're going to hit that top of that garage door, not a doubt. Brand-new GMC.
I have a question. In relation to the other structures, you've got neighbors on either side, and you know, the picture really helped to help us understand what you're trying to do. In relation to the other structures, is yours, and I'm not good at this, is your, what you're asking for that much higher than the structures around?
No, it'll still be significantly lower than the other structures.
Will be six feet lower than the.
So the other structures must have gotten a variance?
The other structures are connected to the home, and if you're connected to the home, that follows under a different height restriction. This would be a standalone garage.
Okay, but it's not sticking out way above the other structures around it?
No, so if you look at the aerial photo, so you can see the adjacent house is much taller, but a house is the primary structure, is allowed to go to 25 feet to the midpoint. And just like the garage has a tap to the house, it's attached to the house, it too can go to 25 feet to the midpoint, but our ordinance has a 14-foot feet to the midpoint on accessory structures. And again, just to piggyback a little bit, what Alderman Duraney mentioned, you know, that's, the staff recommendation was denial because of, not because of what the neighbors said, because it's not necessarily a popularity contest for giving a variance. It's the practical difficulty test, Matt, what's unique about this property? And that was the reason for the staff denial. But conversely, planning commission also looked at it and saw the merits of why in this instance, it certainly fits in the neighborhood. And the planning commission, in their recommendation, or at least desire, wants to come back and visit the policy on the height requirement, too. And again, that's something the council hasn't talked about at this point.
Mayor, Wendy, go ahead.
I just wanted to voice my reasoning for my vote last night, and I will stand by it. It's my belief, I always try, if we have a policy, I think we should try to adhere to it. It lessens inconsistencies, it lessens bias. These policies were put in place, and I think we need to abide by them whenever we can. By law, I think it's a law. By law, I, I think it's a law, I don't know if it's the Minnesota statute, um, variance granted when there are practical difficulties, um, as used in conjunction, in connection with the granting the variance means, and it gives you three items. None of these items that are defined by law, which would support a variance from our ordinance, to me, seem to exist in this request. Um, we talked about the height of vehicles, I get that, just the, you can speak into some of that, I just wanna finish my thought. Um, nothing in our variance prevents anybody from building a garage in which their van or their truck or their SUV will fit. We do, so that's not a practical difficulty in my mind. What's happening, from my understanding, the way you explained last night, is in order to build a garage which your, which will house your vehicles, you have to get to a certain height. It's the addition of the bonus room and the area and those extras that you'd like to have, that any, all of us would want to have that, um, that's creating the problem, that's creating the desire for the variance. So in my mind, the practical difficulty would be, is if our variance, or excuse me, if our ordinance got in the way of me being able to house my vehicles. If I had a handicap van, if I had, um, a larger truck, um, but our variance, our, I'm screwing up the words, our ordinance doesn't do that. So to me, it doesn't meet the practical difficulties test. And I have done my best while I've been on council to try to be consistent in the way I, um, approach things. And, um, I just don't see anything here that leads me to believe we need to vary from the ordinance as it stands. Um, if it prompts further discussion, that we may need to do that at some point, I'm all in and willing to have those discussions. Um, but I have to believe that those, the ordinance was created, designed, written, based on some information at the time. And, um, if we need to revisit that and revisit policy moving forward, I'm all in. Um, but as it stands, that was my reasoning and I will stand by that tonight.
Okay, thanks Wendy. I'd like to make a comment to that. One thing that we haven't put in there, she's saying there's nothing there. I actually had, which, surgery a few months ago on my right foot. I'm doing rehabilitation here in DL and nowhere in our house can I actually do the full exercises right now, 'cause our house is only seven to eight-foot ceilings. If I'm doing jumping jacks or anything, I'm gonna hit the ceiling. I'm tall enough to do that. Wintertime, cars are in there, I'm not gonna be able to do that in the garage unless I'm upstairs. You can't exercise. That is, and I can take my shoe off and I'll show you where the surgery is, if you need to see it.
Well, I'm just, and I'm just gonna remind everyone too, that the planning commission thought we had met the requirements for variance.
Right.
So this, this is putting us in a difficult situation.
We went through a long, long procedure that night. They asked many, many questions and we went through every one of them and they agreed with every single one that we answered, one hundred percent. Well, it sounds like it's gonna come down to a vote here, so unless it.
I guess I haven't spoken yet tonight, but, um, it kinda going back to what Wendy says, I think dragging the city attorney into this a little bit, not really. Um, there is Minnesota state statute that does go into this pretty specifically and it does say practical difficulties and it's not brought upon by, by the order, um, it's not gonna, you know, alter the essential character of locality, you know? Yeah, it's not a popularity contest, you know? My neighbor today might be happy with what I'm doing, but the next one might not be. So that's what we're up here looking to do, is we're looking to enforce the rules that we have out on the books right now. That you're asking for something that's different than what, what we currently have and, and it's, the burden's on you to provide us with a practical difficulty on why, why we should grant this and it's, I, I can definitely understand a tall vehicle and a tall vehicle is something that you do need to get into a garage, because we wanna have it in a garage, protect it in long-term. But like Wendy was saying, the part that's a little bit more of a challenge is that upper room with the bathroom, the shower, it looks like there might be a kitchenette that might be moving in there. Whatever happens in the future, it's there, it's, I don't know. Kelsey, what is the rule on second dwelling on a parcel? Is that something that could come into play?
Yeah, we, we don't allow two dwellings on a parcel, but, um, these bonus rooms do exist, um, bathrooms and garages do exist, but they can't have, you know, a bathroom and a kitchenette and bedrooms, 'cause that would be a dwelling unit. So, a bathroom and a bonus room going is permitted, we, we have several of those.
Dan, just that, one reason I say there, our house is gonna be seventy-five to eighty feet from the garage. So if you're over and we're working in the garage and it's pouring down rain or whatever, drinking some beer, water, whatever, you'd have to go eighty, minimum eighty feet before you even got to the house.
Sure.
And our neighbors, one reason it's, it's partial to look for there, I mean, we, we're totally out of place. Our neighbors think so too. It, it doesn't look, you know, architecturally wise like the other houses.
And see, that's why I go for you, because I've seen fences through neighbors.
Yep.
And in this case, it's the opposite. And as far as what you said, Dan, I disagree with you. If you put a fence there, right now, your, your neighbor puts a fence right next to you right now, well, guess what, when they sell it, that person knows there's a fence there when they buy it. So I disagree with what you guys said. I, 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 I'd go for it, I really do.
Thank you.
So, the, the, the one thing I go back to, then if we go ahead and approve that for you, we're gonna have many other people in Detroit Lakes wanting to have the same condition done for their properties and, um, you know, we were talking fourteen feet and you brought us some examples of some other houses around town that were at fourteen feet, two inches. There, but last night we were talking eighteen feet, now we're talking six, but you're talking four feet more than, than what the fourteen that we're allowing. You know, then we get into the problems with it. But I, my concern is that if we, if we do it for this house, then we better be ready to do it to every, every home throughout the city of Detroit Lakes and areas, what part of town would you live in? And I, I don't know if we wanna get into that, to that wall of wax where we're gonna have these super bonus rooms in all the garages.
Okay. We're probably starting to get a little repetitive, so I, I'm gonna call the question. Regardless of the outcome, Kelsey, will you ask the planning commission to take a look at the ordinance?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Jay?
Uh, no.
Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
The motion is the deny.
Right.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
So the motion passes and the variance is denied, but we're gonna refer it.
I'm sorry, I made comment there, so, no.
So you're voting to deny it?
Voting to deny.
Okay, well, most, it doesn't pass, so. We're gonna refer it back to the planning commission and maybe there's still an opportunity for you guys to get what you're looking for and so.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Again, Matt, without objection, can we go to item five B?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, item five B, consideration to a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a crematory retort in a detached garage in B3 auto-oriented business district at 609 US Highway 10 East, uh, which is David Donahour Funeral Home. Uh, this was given staff recommendation, correct, Kelsey?
Yes.
Okay, well, this was also cleared last, uh, at the planning commission. Uh, the CDC was split on this and I'm happy to see Mr. Beaton in the audience tonight as we had a few questions from the CDC last night. Um, so at this point, I would, uh, Mr. Beaton, would you come up so we could ask a few questions, sir?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. Um, I know if, one of the questions I had last night was, um, seeing the proximity to your neighbor of outlet recreation and knowing that you've spoken with them and they said they're okay with this, my question is, and it's my assumption that in the garage there's no cooler space.
Oh, yeah, I checked that down here.
There is.
There is cooler space, okay. And my biggest concern was, and maybe you can educate me on this, is will you be rolling with white sheets across the parking lot from your building into the garage? Does it have to go in the hearse, be transported? My fear is that I'm with a family or a family's across the street looking at a brand-new boat that I'm excited about and I see a body rolling from one building to the next. And I guess, can you just explain that process to me, sir?
Uh, typically, they would be transferred from the main building to the back garage in a van.
Okay.
Or they would originate in the back garage from the time they came into our care, depending on what the service was.
Gotcha.
Typically or always?
I'm gonna say always.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know there was further questions last night, so I open up to the rest of the council as well.
The pushing.
Can we get a motion? Can we get a motion on the table first and then?
Sorry, I screwed that up. Um, looking at this, we discussed this last night, as I mentioned, CDC was split. Uh, I'm going to go and make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to be made seconded to approve the conditional use permit. So with that, I would open up further discussion. Ron?
See, the, some of the questions I have, because the concern I've had from neighbors is that you, you do have a garage where the crematory is gonna be and right now you, you're gonna plan on having just one crematory, is that correct?
That's all we'll ever have is one.
At this time. But, but the question is, we know you've got two funeral homes in Detroit Lakes, West Joe's and David Donahour, but will you be doing crematory work for other funeral homes throughout our region?
Uh, at this point in time, it would be David Donahour and West Joe's. We also operate the Fury Funeral Home in Frasie, so Fury as well. And, uh, potentially Schon and Berger Funeral Home in Purim, which is a substantially smaller business than David Donahour. So we would, we are looking at conducting their cremations, however, their volume is much, much, much smaller than our volume is.
Okay, the, the concern I've had from some neighbors is that the, the van that you have isn't able to fully drive into the garage, so part of it's gonna be stuck out. So every time you, you have a body coming, you'd have that while they unloaded. And the, and the question was, what, why can't you have a building that would be completely enclosed, so when you, when you did go in, doors are open, you could drive right in, it would close and it'd be out of sight, out of mind. Right now, if it does stick out, you kind of know what's going on there.
Well, uh, the building is thirty feet deep, so technically you could back the van in, which is sixteen feet, eight inches, close the door and pull the cremation container or the cot out. You could do that. Would you practically do that every time? I'm not sure. Um, we are planning on putting up a privacy fence between ourselves and outlet recreation. Um, obviously, our business is discretion and dignity, so I cannot think that we would ever be providing non-dignified services. But if the vehicle that's housing the body awaiting cremation is seventy-five percent in, there, you, you wouldn't see anything. Um, it's just like we take caskets out and load them into the hearse and the parking lot. So, uh, at no point would there be an exposed body being transported anywhere. So if we were in a condition of weather, then we definitely have the ability to fully back in and close the door. Uh, or any other reason, if we were in the middle of the day and there was a funeral in progress, as you know, our building, the dining room overlooks the parking lot, the back garage is in the parking lot, it would never do something that our patrons would be able to see. Uh, so we do have the ability to fully back in and close the door. I don't know that we would do that every single time.
Okay, are there further questions?
Can I ask some questions?
Go ahead, Jay.
Sorry. How many funeral homes does the Verden Companies, that is the parent company of David Donahour, how many funeral homes do they own?
I think fifty-six.
Is that in Minnesota or all states?
Uh, I believe we are in eight states. Most of them are in Minnesota.
Forty-some Minnesota alone.
I don't, I, I think it's in the thirties.
I was instructed that it was well over a hundred potentially, that this, that this corporation owns. How many, so, how many crematoriums does Verden Company own?
I couldn't say. Um, probably fifteen.
How many, um, so within this crematorium, each, each, there's a retort, there, will there be two retorts within this?
No, never. We don't have the ability to have two. So it would just be one.
So it'll just be one. So, so there's funeral homes in Frasie, Pelican Rapids, Purim, Crookston, Alexandria, Mayville, um, where do those bodies go for crematory or cremation?
Uh, Fergus Falls has their own, that's where our cremations currently go. Alexandria has their own. Frasie, we own. Uh, Pelican Rapids is a sister firm of ours, very, very, very low-volume firm. Uh, they would be splitting the difference going to Fergus Falls or here for cremation. Their relationship has been with Fergus Falls for many, many years, so I don't know why they would change that. Uh, Mayville, I think they take theirs to a crematory in Fargo. Uh, that would be a little bit of a hike, I think, for them to come to us. Crookston, uh, Crookston currently does go to Fergus Falls, uh, potential they would come to us. But, you know, we're, we're installing this crematory for the use of our business in Detroit Lakes and Frasie, because we have so many cremations that it has become a burden for us to go to Fergus Falls. So we're not opening a cremation business. We're adding a service that we need to have to our going concern, which is a funeral home. So we're not looking to really do a lot of cremations for outside people. Now, because we are a part of Verden Corporation, there are a couple of sister firms that it might make more sense for them to use us than to go to Fergus Falls if the distance is greater. But our, our main function here is to conduct our own cremations in Detroit Lakes.
Well, what, what percentage, uh, you know, looking at funerals now and I'm reading different things, would you say that we're getting close to sixty-five to seven percent of the funerals or cremations now?
David Donahour is eighty percent. West Joe's is over seventy percent and Fury, being a relative, you know, rural farming community, is, is lower than that. But our cremation rate for those three funeral homes is, is over seventy percent.
You see, and that's, that's one of the reasons why the neighborhoods would like to see it, having you go inside unclosed building when you, when you, when you did that. That's, that's just perceived by the people that will have to live around you. And I'm just, uh, you know, telling you what they expressed to me on it, so.
None, none of our neighbors have come to us and said this. Two very prominent businesses.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking to the neighborhood people behind it.
We, we don't have any neighborhood people, we're surrounded by businesses.
Okay, all right.
So Jay, did you have some additional comments?
Yeah, have, have you considered, um, using the industrial park as a location for a crematory?
Not at this time.
Okay. My personal opinion is, I think, I think this is gonna be busier than what we anticipate based on the size of your corporation that has multiple locations and potentially could be bringing multiple bodies to this location for cremation. So I, I, that's the concern I have in a location with the amount of business that this is going to have. I would personally like to see it, um, placed in the, in an industrial park.
Are there further comments from the council?
Here, I mean, can I, can I amend my own motion?
No. Why not?
You can make a motion to amend your motion and then second it, we can vote on the amendment.
You got me all confused. Same here, I'd like to do what he said.
So go ahead and do that.
So, so Mr. Beaton, hearing you talk and speak about this, you're, you're saying that you'd only wanna go to one retort. And I guess I'd like to add that then, as saying, okay, one condition would be, if this would be granted, would be one retort max then?
We couldn't fit two.
Okay, well, then that would be a non-issue.
So there's no possibility of us ever having two.
Okay. So that would be a non-issue then?
It's a non-issue.
Okay.
So it's a non-motion also then, right?
Or it can still be a condition if you wish to.
As I say, I think we still leave it in there as a condition.
It says no more than two, but you're saying you wouldn't ever fit two.
You would have to do such an unbelievably high volume to, to require two. There, there isn't enough people in Becker County or the surrounding counties that we would ever, I mean, you, you were talking about cremating fifteen-hundred bodies a year. Our volume is three hundred and fifty total, so we would never get to that. And if we did, that building would be totally insufficient for two, because we are putting in a large cooler, we have a cooler now, we're gonna put in a bigger one. Um, and the retort and the equipment that's needed, you couldn't, you couldn't get it And the retort and the equipment that's needed, you couldn't, you couldn't get it into that facility.
Where do the bodies go from other crematory facilities of yours when the retort is down and needs re-bricking?
So we use Fergus Falls almost exclusively, however, when they have had maintenance, we go to Alexandria.
Where does Fergus Falls have their crematory at?
In the funeral home.
In the funeral home?
Yeah.
Inside the actual building?
In the actual building, and if you stand on the main street on the sidewalk and look up at the building, you can see the stack.
Is that, is that funeral home more towards the edge of city limits?
It's right in, right in the limits.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, we should vote on first. And if that passes, then we'll vote on either one. So all in favor of the amended?
What was the, what was the amendment and who seconded?
I don't think anyone seconded here.
I'll second it. So we just repeat the?
The amended motion would be to have one retort max.
Okay. So all in favor of that amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Now you vote on the motion as amended.
Now the motion has been amended. So now we're gonna vote on the conditional use permit with only one, what do you call it? A retort? With one retort. And are there other conditions that are included in this?
Yeah, Mayor's gonna mention that in the resolution, there are other conditions. So item two would be amended, so instead of saying there'd be no more than two crematory furnaces or retorts, it would be just one. And then the other conditions would probably remain in place, and then item six deals with that landscaping screen.
And Mr. Beaton, are you familiar with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
So unless there's anyone else in the audience, which I don't see anybody, we'll go back to the top, and at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for unpaid streetlight fees, water and sewer fees, and stormwater charges. Heidi or Kelsey, do you wanna preface this for the council?
Mayor and council, this is an annual process we do for those payments, the unpaid utility bills. I'll probably defer to Heidi if you have an updated list, because we've had a few late payments.
Yes, so the list in your packet has about $5,100 worth of assessment, or potentially assessed, assessable, utility bills that would go onto folks' property taxes next year. A few of those have been paid down. That balance is now at $4,322.74.
Are there any questions, Kelsey or Heidi? If not, I would entertain a motion for funeral.
Mayor, just make sure, we have to have a hearing, so make sure you.
Oh, closed the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wishes to make any comments regarding the unpaid streetlight fees, water and sewer fees, or stormwater charges? Hearing done, that public hearing is closed, and now I would entertain a motion.
So consideration to resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid streetlights, water, sewer, and stormwater charges. The finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the proposed assessments for unpaid streetlight fees, water, and sewer, and stormwater charges. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then item C is, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for unpaid fire protection charges. Again, I would call on Kelsey and Heidi.
Mayor and council, again, annually we do this on any unpaid fire calls. If those fire calls are contributed to, even within Becker County, we can especially assess them.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has a question or would like to make a comment regarding the assessments for unpaid fire protection charges for the year 2022 and 2023? Hearing done, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion for those assessments.
Item C one is consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid fire protection charges for the year of 2022, 2023. Finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the assessment role for unpaid fire protection charges. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to the Community Development Committee and Chairman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 5A, consideration to a resolution setting a public hearing for the proposed vocation of a portion of dedicated public road at Lake Boulevard in Platte, Pocahama Beach at 1266 East Shore Drive. This was discussed last night and at the Planning Commission with unanimous approval. This would be to set a hearing for next month to do the vocations, this is just hearing notice of that. And I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for next month regarding the property of 1266 East Shore Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to item 5C, consideration to a resolution approving a variance to allow a six-foot-high fence in the front yard of 1266 East Shore Drive. This passed Planning Commission unanimously, we had discussion on this at CDC last night. This is, we move, and I so move this forward as a positive recommendation.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a variance to allow a six-foot-high fence in the front yard of 1266 East Shore Drive. Is there discussion?
Mayor, if I may, maybe I'll put this all together, put a bow on it here a little bit. So 5A, C, and D are all interrelated. Couple months ago, the applicant, Robert Keel, at 1266 East Shore Drive, requested a variance for a six-foot-high fence in the front yard, which would be the roadside of the property. There was an existing fence there before, I actually received a variance back in 2010 for a chain link fence, for a six-foot-high chain link fence, because you can't have a six-foot-high fence in your front yard, okay? That variance was granted back in 2010. Mr. Keel removed that chain link fence and put in a privacy fence, a vinyl privacy fence. We required him to come back and get another variance because the old variance was specific to a chain link fence. One of the conditions that was added to that variance was he had to make sure it was on his property. He had to get a survey done and make sure it was on his property and not on city right-of-way. Lo and behold, the fence is on city right-of-way. So that's why you have, action item number 5A is going to be calling for that vacation next month to vacate the road right-of-way, so his fence ends up being on his property. Now, the city will still retain a utility easement in there if the vacation is approved next month, because we do have utilities in there, but we don't need it for a roadway anymore. Those who aren't familiar, this is, you know, part of the Highway 10 realignment, that was part of the old, I guess, east shore or north shore, kind of, somewhere in there. So that's why the vacation can be done. Along with his six-foot-high fence in the front yard towards the road, he also installed a four-foot-high fence, privacy fence, all the way up to basically the water's edge. That too is in violation of the ordinance because we do not allow any fences in the shore impact zone. So last month, he chose to apply for a new variance for both the six-foot-high fence and the four-foot-high fence in the shore impact zone. So the planning commission recommendation is to approve the variance for the six-foot-high fence, which is item 5C, but to deny a 5D, which includes the variance for the fence in the shore impact zone.
So aren't we putting the cart before the horse if we don't know if it's gonna be vacated?
Yeah, so two reasons why, ideally, we would, we'd do the vacation first. Problem is, we've extended that, his application for an extra 60 days. We need, council needs to act on that variance to comply with that 60-day rule. So the condition that is part of the variance is that he still has to prove that it's on his property. So in effect, he'll satisfy that condition next month if the vacation is approved.
Got it. Okay, so where were we at? Did we have a motion?
There was a motion to.
And a second?
Yes, for C.
For item C. Is there further discussion on item C?
So just a question, so like you said that it's, one of the conditions is he proves it on, it's on his property, if we don't vacate that, that road right-of-way, then this is a point that he's gonna tear down?
Or, or he'd have to move the fence onto his property? He'd have to move it off of his property? Off of his property.
Further questions or comments?
The fence is already built, right?
Yeah. This is what happened.
After the fact.
Right. This is why you get permits before you do things, that's my editorial comment.
PSA.
Oh, okay.
Editorial comment.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving on to 5D, same situation. Consideration of a resolution denying a variance to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard and a four-foot fence in the shore impact zone at 1266 East Shore Drive. We looked at this last night, we came to the conclusion at CDC, we would like the four-foot fence inside the shore impact zone removed, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to basically deny the variance, right, Matt?
Correct.
Other than, other than we're letting him have the six-foot.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, further discussion?
Just for clarification, because this got me all twisted up last night, is this is on the north property line, running from basically the water's edge west, excuse me, east back to his home, just moving it out of the shore impact zone.
Very good. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything further, Matt?
That is all, and I'll try to do better next month.
We are struggling a little bit, aren't we? Let's move to the Public Works Committee, Chairman Zeeman.
Okay, item 6A, consideration to resolution declaring cost to be assessed for the Terry Street and Andrew subdivision street and hill improvement project, and setting a special assessment hearing for 5:00 on our meeting November 14, 2023, 2023, and the proposed assessments. I'm gonna call on John Pratt to kinda give us an update on this.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, this is just setting a hearing for next month, as Alderman Zeeman pointed out, for the Terry Street and Andrew subdivision improvement project that is being completed. So costs came in in general lower than, than what was originally projected at the time of bid, so that's good news, and we'll have a hearing next month to present those costs.
Okay. Okay, I might mention that the city share of this will be $94,000, and the, and the property owner is gonna be 410,000, but you know, that's for nine, nine lots, so you can see we're special in the stuff on new homes. We talk about trying to keep the affordable housing down, and it makes it difficult sometimes, but the committee recommends that we do have this public hearing next week, next month, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to declare cost to be assessed for the Terry Street and Andrew subdivision project, and to set a special assessment hearing for next month at 5:00 PM, November 14. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item B, is consideration of approving bids for the excavation of the new pickleball court. Once again, I'll ask John to give us an update on that.
Yeah, I'll do my best, it's kind of Sean's item too, but we've put a plan together for the proposed expansion of the pickleball court down in People's Park, add three courts. Since we got the plan together, Sean's gone out and obtained some quotes for the initial work, which would just consist of excavating the poorer subgrade material that exists down in People's Park, about a four-foot correction, and replacing that with suitable material, doing that this fall, so it has time to settle out, things of that nature, and then potentially the work would continue next spring.
Okay, and like Josh said, we'll just do the preliminary work right now for $35,000, but the pickleball people, they're gonna be raising $220,000, which is needed to make this thing complete, completely ready for next spring, and they're working on the fundraising right now, so go ahead and make a motion to approve this bid for the excavation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bid for the excavation of the new pickleball courts.
There's three courts, right? Three.
Discussion?
Just a comment, my understanding, my understanding is that the Pickleball Association has the money raised to, for this part of the project, so, so, and then they will continue.
They do have the $35,000, but they're still working on the $220,000.
Correct.
Well, thank you for that distinction, so it wasn't the city's paying for this excavation, and then they're gonna raise funds.
Nope, they have around, my understanding was around 60,000 to 65,000 already raised, so, and then, and then, so that will go towards the cost of this project, this piece of the project. And then to Ron's point, they will continue to fundraise for, to build, you know, actually build the courts next year.
Mayor and council, they do have, they told us at the Port Board meeting that between pledges and cash, about 60,000, to what is pledges and what is cash, I believe they thought they were close to that. You know, I'm not even gonna.
You do have the finance person here, you know.
There we go.
So I can give you the amount that we've got to date, so in cash right now, we've got $30,041.66. In total confirmed pledges, that includes the cash, is $61,075, so just over 30,000 in cash already, 61,000 pledged.
Further discussion?
Well, I just, the pickleball people are picking up the total cost, so they're, they're gonna take, take care.
Mayor, thank you to the Pickleball Courts, your Pickleball Association, great. Does this fit as, fit into kind of that master plan we were presenting at People's Park?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It, it fits into the conceptual drawing that we had, we had drafted quite well, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, about one more item that's not on here before we get into John's and City Engineer Report, but a week ago, last Wednesday, we had a big news happening on the North Side of the Boys and Girls Club. The city of Detroit Lakes North Side now has their own city park, and it's great news for all the kids up there, and they're happy, and, you know, since 1895, the North Side City Park has been Washington School. So now we have our own property, and we're inviting all the other kids in town to come up and join our kids and see our beautiful park, and it was, everybody helped, pitch in from service clubs to businesses, to the Detroit Lakes gave money on this, and it's just, see that new park up there, and I'm happy for all the kids. It's a big day in the North Side of town. And so now, John, I'm gonna call on you for your update on City Engineer Report, and tell us how we're coming on every street project before winter comes.
Sounds good. Mayor and council, yep, there's still some construction activity happening, but we are starting to get some things wrapped up. Campbell Avenue and Linden Lane is probably around 80% complete right now, they're doing the final grading on the Class 5, curb and gutter's done. Right now, they're targeting paving the base course on that, hopefully Monday. After that, they'll place some topsoil and call it a season, and come back next spring and do the final turf restoration and final paving again next spring, but getting pretty close on that one, it's gone very well. Summit Avenue project, it's kind of about, it's in the same boat, concrete curb and gutter's done, that one is paved, crews are working on grading for the concrete sidewalks, driveways, and things like that right now. Expect that concrete work to start next week. Once that's complete, again, they'll get topsoil placed and call it a season and come back next spring with the seeding and the final paving, so probably a couple more weeks for sure of, of construction, and then we should be wrapped up on those. Terry Street and Dandrew, I mean, that project, the Terry Street portion is complete, which is the sewer and water to the new food pantry. All of the underground infrastructure for the Dandrew subdivision's done. They're working on street grading, hoping to see curb and gutter come in there yet this year, that was the plan from the contractor. That said, they actually aren't obligated to get that work done this year, that could be pumped until spring, so we'll see what happens on that, but we already covered an item where we're gonna have our assessment hearing on that next month, so. 2023 Street Rehab Project, again, we rejected those bids earlier this summer, we are working on right now putting together a, an amendment to that preliminary report. We're reexamining some of the streets that were included in the bid, also gonna add some additional streets to expand that scope of work, so we'll be doing more street rehabs next year. I expect I'll bring that report to the council in November for consideration, and after that, we would move that to a public hearing and get the design updated, get it bid out this winter. Willow Springs, again, that's along for the ride with the rehab project, we'll rebid that this winter with that project. Southwood Shore Estates, same story, that was along the ride for the rehab project. Whether or not we rebid that, I think is maybe up for a little bit of debate, and it'll depend on what the developer decides to do moving ahead with that property. There's obviously been some new development with that, so we'll see what they wanna do with those seven lots that are along South Shore Drive, and whether they wanna continue with that work or not. Excuse me. The West Downtown project, we are working on developing that preliminary report right now, we've been out doing the field survey, things like that, getting the preliminary design ready to go. I plan to bring that preliminary report to the council next month as well. And again, that will move to a hearing the following month, but this is our larger reconstruction improvement project for twenty twenty-four that will touch on a number of roads on the west side of, of the downtown, including Frazee, Holmes Front, a little bit of Lake Avenue and some alley work, so. And then finally, we are underway with our final design of the new one-point-five-million-gallon water tower that'll replace our existing million-gallon tank. So work will continue on that with the anticipation that we've maybe bid something late spring, early summer next year, and that'll be a couple-year project for sure, so that's it.
Questions for John?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept John's status report of the city engineer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the city engineer's monthly project status report discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move to the finance committee.
Item seven A and B, I'm just gonna hand it over to Heidi to give us a synopsis of what these are, and then I'll do the motions.
Yes, so items seven and B are consideration to resolutions accepting our loans from the PFA for Campbell and Linden Street projects. If you recall, a number of months back, the council approved the city applying for those funds. This is basically us closing that loop on that process and, and finalizing those loans through the PFA. Our interest rate that we receive through the PFA on these is two-point-four-four-nine percent, so very good interest rate, that's a lot better than what we'd get out on the open market if we were to sell bonds for this project. So very favorable rate, twenty-year obligations. Again, these are state and federal funds that we're receiving through the state PFA, so, you know, obviously a few more hoops and things that we have to abide by in terms of these funds, but well worth that for that extra discount in our, in our interest percentage. So that's what we have here. So the first one is related to the sewer portion of the project at about two-point-four million, and then the second item is for the water portion, which is about one-point-two-six million.
Okay.
So item A is consideration to a resolution accepting the offer of Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a general obligation sewer revenue note, series two thousand twenty-three B, in the original aggregate principal amount of two million four hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, providing for issuance and authorizing the execution of a bond purchase and project loan agreement. Finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution accepting the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority general obligation note for the Campbell Avenue project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item B is consideration to a resolution accepting the offer of Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a general obligation water revenue note, series two thousand twenty-three C, in the original aggregate principal amount of one million two hundred and forty, sixty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars, providing for issuance and authorizing the execution of the bond purchase and project loan agreement. Finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution accepting the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority general obligation note for the water portion of Campbell Avenue project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item seven C is consideration to a memorandum of understanding with AFME regarding the arena schedule. I'll take a swing at this, if you wanna clean it up for me, give you that. This is just basically an agreement with the AFME union about the arena employees, because now there's three arena employees, because it'll free up a little more scheduling flexibility, and they have reviewed this, finance committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a memorandum of understanding with the AFME union regarding the arena schedule discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's it, right?
That's it.
Moving to the chairperson's drive for the public safety committee.
Thank you. Item eight A, consideration to the request from Tharrelson Properties for a variance relative to the installation of a sprinkler system at ten seventy-one Shorewood Drive. Everyone has the request in the packet. My understanding is they are in their construction, maybe I'll let the chief speak to it, he'll do a much better job than me, than I.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, yeah, this is a very specific situation that we're gonna grant a variance, or you could grant a variance to. They are putting in a sprinkler system, they have a shop that they're putting living quarters above. Currently, they can't quite meet N F P A thirteen due to some specific requirements for sprinkler flow, along with extra gallon per minute in a simulated hydrant outside. With the water tower project going forward, their pressures down there will go up as soon as that project is finished, so this is essentially a variance for a couple of years, just so they don't have to install a large holding tank to be able to meet those requirements. As soon as the project is done, their pressures will rise, and they'll be able to meet all those requirements without doing anything, so I think we should grant this variance, and any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think you mentioned yesterday, you've had conversations with them about what this means to them in terms of the safety of the?
Right, yeah, so essentially, by installing these, this sprinkler system, they're meeting the life safety aspect of the code, they're just not quite meeting the extra gallonage, which would help save the property at this time.
Okay, further questions?
Thanks, Chief. So Wendy, I think we need a motion.
Yes. So I move that the council grant the request for a variance relative to the installation of a sprinkler system at ten seventy-one Shorewood Drive.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a variance relative to the sprinkler system at ten seventy-one Shorewood Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That looks like it's it for the public safety, right?
Yes, it is.
Good.
Liquor gambling control, Chairman Dolan.
Well, no barriers, suspenses, or garages here, just plain fun, and we're talking about pedal pubs. Pedal pubs are those, they look like a little train car where people sit all around it with pedals on it, and there's a bar in the middle of it, and they go down the town, and we talked about the pros and the cons, the concerns as far as the drinking part of it. For the most part, we're all favorable on moving this forward, we're gonna do more digging into it, but it's one more do fun thing that we can probably add in Detroit Lakes. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, nothing on A either, right? Line A?
Um.
The fund bill?
Fund balance, no.
Okay, very good. And Mike, was there anything that we brought forward from the public utilities?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Anything from any city staff member? Kelsey, anything?
I'm making that.
Okay, I still don't have somebody that I can appoint to the flyers gymnastic board, so if anybody on the council has a recommendation, I would certainly welcome your help on that. Some announcements, the public discussion on the twenty twenty-four budget tax levy pursuant to the truth in taxation requirements will take place at our December twelfth council meeting at six oh one P M. As mentioned earlier, when we were talking with the coalition, the fall conferences, November sixteenth and seventeenth in Wilmer, if any of the councils interested in going, you can let Kerry know. The balance of the twenty twenty-three council dates are listed, the twenty twenty-four joint governance meeting dates are listed. And the twenty twenty-four council meeting dates are listed, and they'll all be, so far, gonna be at the courthouse until we get further notice. So with that, Karen, anything further?
Good, Your Honor.
Jay, Dan? Wendy? Ron?
Good, Your Honor.
Jackie? Matt? No, sir. Mike?
Nothing.
And Jay?
Nope.
The business of this council has come to a conclusion in the meetings.